For the 19th consecutive year, the town of Westwood has won an achievement for its comprehensive annual fiscal report, a CAFRA, if I'm pronouncing that acronym correctly. This award is prestigious. It's awarded by the Government Finance Officers Association, a major professional association servicing the needs of nearly 19,000 appointed and elected officials dealing with municipal finance. The CAFRA report is an important part of the town's efforts to offer full disclosure of its financial information. The CAFRA report was most recently used as part of our standard and poor's credit review. This is critical as the town carries a AAA bond rating thanks to our staff. The credit rating agency utilizes rely on the report to review information in a readily available and standard format to understand the town's economic overview, demographics, and overall financial position. The Board of Selectmen thanks you. Thanks, Mike Gillette, our Town Administrator, Mr. Gavin, PM, and your staff for such an outstanding job. It is important for everybody to recognize there are only four municipalities in Massachusetts that have won this more times, Boston, Worcester, and Cambridge being three of the four. So it's pretty prestigious that a small town of the 350 municipalities has won this almost 20 years in a row. So, thank you all.
Thank you, and we thank the Selectmen for your support. To win a 28th one really is, for a small town, quite an achievement for the whole town. We included it in one of your packets. We usually take a picture every few years because we put it in the document. They like to see that in the document. And if you look back, you know, first of all, we look way younger than you, but, you know, you'll see that staff may change, we may have new board members, but the town has been committed, the town of Westwood, to this financial disclosure for that long period of time. And that really is, can be unusual for a small town who sometimes can suffer from fluctuations in staff or change in leadership. But our Selectmen have always been so supportive of this. And as you said, John, it really is a big part of our bond rating. When we sell our debt, helps us get the best and lowest interest rates for our debt. And what we've done a lot of bonding the last couple of years to do some very important projects in town, this has been a big part of making that a smooth process.
Yeah, thank you. Jim?
No, I'm only echoing what has been said. And it's interesting is when we're on the calls with, say, movies or standard and force, they're asking specifically for the information from the CAFRA because they want to go through that. So it's a standardized document with all the comprehensive reporting that they need to be able to evaluate who we are. And again, the staff does an incredible job, so.
Great. Thank you all very much. And for those listening and watching at home, we did the photographs before the meeting. So we'll publish those as soon as they're ready.
Can I add something?
Oh, sure.
I'm not sure if I missed it. Excuse me, but Laura Bakari is new to the team, and I just want to say that an important and value contributor now to the team. And this doesn't get old. It's really nice to recognize you folks for your work year after year. It's really a very happy time.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you all. All right, moving on. I'm sure, I feel as though the whole town was at Westwood High School on Saturday, Friday night's football game, and Saturday for Westwood Day. But I do think it is so incredibly important that we thank Mr. Gillette and Nicole Banks and the staff for all that they did. It was such a great event once again this year. We have a tremendous amount of volunteers, people who take shifts throughout the day. It was amazing to see so many of them. But to see the number of people is great. It's great for our civic engagement. I know I got a lot of positive feedback. It seems to get better every year. The delay of the fireworks actually worked out well for Neighborhood Block Party the next day. It seemed like it was scheduled that way. But next year, we'll finally get the weather right. I don't know if you want to add anything?
Well, I, an observation I had is that it was an event that appealed to all generations. And it was really nice to see people who have raised their families, now are grandparents, coming out to this event and seeing friends and commenting that they were seeing people they hadn't seen in years and how happy they were for that. And down to the youngest of young and very new families into town. I met a couple who just moved into town with their twins, and they're, look like they're under a year old, and how happy they are. And they were just so impressed that the community put this kind of event on. So I think it just speaks very well for the town, but it also was really something that provided opportunities to engage for anyone who wanted to turn out. Just so much going on. So I'm sure the staff is exhausted, but they did a great job. Really wonderful.
Also, a special thank you to Dan McDonald and his gentleman's running club that did the road race in the morning, the fun run. And I tell you, a lot of families running, especially the kids' race together. So it was really a great event. And I know Dan does it every year. His gentleman's running club put it all together to start off Westwood Day. So really is a lot of fun, and it was great weather for running. And then the sun came out in the afternoon, so it was timed perfectly.
Right.
All right, thank you all. Moving on, hard to believe it will be opening a police and a fire station in the coming weeks.
Yes.
So despite, despite the project starting many months apart, they will actually complete one week apart. So this Friday, the fire station will be somewhat operational. We will be moved in.
Moving furniture.
Moving the furniture and then...
Moving the furniture in this week, and okay.
Equipment and stuff, yeah.
So in the fire service, apparently, it's not called a ribbon cutting. It is called a hose uncoupling. And that will occur in the coming weeks. That date will be published once we know it's safe to have visitors in the building, correct? Okay, so more to come. But we're very excited to finally reach that milestone. And ironically, the following week, the first week of October, operations out of the new police station, again, furniture and things will be moved. In the second week of October, they will start getting things up and running. The police station project is somewhat different in that the entire area will remain a construction project until the old police station is finally removed. So any public showings of that will occur later on this year, correct? Okay. So we're excited about that. More to come. We hope to engage the public in all of those great openings. Aid to the Elderly Fund and Not Your Average Joes. Okay, the Aid to the Elderly Fund will be featured, the featured nonprofit, every Tuesday for the month of October at Not Your Average Joe's, Westwood location, when a customer presents a flyer, which is available at Town Hall, the Senior Center, and through the schools newsletter, to the server, 15% of the bill will be donated to the aid, to the elderly fund. So I know Mr. Gillette's taking us there several times, so I hope all of you will partake as well. Quite an exciting event coming up this year at Severian for the Wounded Warriors Amputee Football Team. For Veterans Day this year, Severian Brothers will be hosting an event sponsored by the Wounded Warrior Amputee Football Team, a nonprofit established in This will be, is composed of amputee veterans and play, will play NFL alumni teams. The organization has invited Westwood residents to attend the game. We would encourage everybody to go. The Selectmen and the Town Administrator have been invited to participate in the opening ceremonies, which we will. Christine, I don't see the time on here.
We actually don't, we don't have all those specific details yet, but we're gonna...
Morning, afternoon, or evening? Do we know that?
It's afternoon, but it's...
Either noon or 1:00.
Okay. So we'll publish that, some more. We haven't time before November.
They're working on a flyer and stuff that we can use for marketing, so.
And what I would say is, I give kudos to Severian because they are great at hosting so many events. We really appreciate it. Chairman's update, final item, Mike, the traffic operational...
Just let me add one little piece to the veterans, is that we would normally have a ceremony on Veterans Park, which will not occur because we will be participating in it.
So we'll try to get everybody to come over there.
Right.
Okay. The traffic operational improvements on 109, traffic operation, on September 20th, 2017, the Town Administrator and our DPW Director submitted a project needs form to Mass DOT for federal construction funding to improve the traffic operations using adaptive signal control technology. The new technology would improve the signals operation by dynamically updating signal timing parameters based on real-time traffic demand, particularly during peak commuter periods. The Town Administrator and DPW will update the board in, as this project receives funding. Can we start that tomorrow morning?
I would hope so, yeah.
I'm dying out there, Mike. Anything else, Mike, under the update we need to do?
Nope, that's it, that's it.
Those traffic improvements, that was something we discussed back in the spring.
We've been, yeah, yeah. Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Our first piece of scheduled action, the Islington Center Memorandum of Understanding. Is Nora here?
Yes.
Yes.
Nora and Dan, you want to come up and give us an update?
So what you have in front of you is a memorandum of understanding, and it's between the town, acting through the Board of Selectmen, and Petruzziello Properties. And what this memorandum of understanding does is, basically, the town, you know, just to give a little bit of the repeat of the history here, you know, an RFP was put out for the four-town properties over in Islington. Petruzziello was the successful bidder proposer, I guess is the only way to put it, on that RFP. There's been a lot of meetings and a lot of, you know, involvement of the Islington Center Task Force. What this document does is it is a document by which the town agrees that Petruzziello can go forward and seek the necessary zoning and other permits that he needs for his project. And the reason the Board of Selectmen and the town need to enter into it is because there are four-town parcels involved. So anytime you're applying for a permit for property that you don't own, you need the permission of the owner. So that's simply what this is. You know, it's a commitment that the town will sign those permit applications, and in turn, Mr. Petruzziello then feels comfortable releasing his architects and engineers to start designing things at a much more detailed level. You know, if Nora has anything to add to that?
Just that it reserves two factors, that the agreement is subject to the Board of Selectmen entering a disposition agreement and working out the terms of that at a later date, and also subject to the planning board actually granting a special permit approval for the project before taking it to town meeting.
And it includes, it's probably 12 or 13, design, construction elements that the developer needs to take into consideration. These grew out of the work of the task force.
And they were discussed at a previous Selectmen's meeting in June.
And so when I, you're talking about number seven, letters A through L?
Yes.
So when I see that, I now see prohibit any drive-through service?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, I'm glad to see it, but that seems to be an enhancement. Okay. And under I, has something changed with the Blue Heart Tavern? Are we, it looks like there was a change. I'm just...
There was a little bit of wordsmithing there.
Okay.
And I can't remember exactly what it was, John.
Read what it is, since you've noted it.
So evaluate the costs and benefits associated with the potential preservation and reuse of the Blue Heart Tavern. And if desired by the town, relocate and renovate the Blue Heart Tavern in accordance with accepted standards for rehabilitation. So my sense was at the public meetings, it seemed like everybody wanted to save it, no one wanted to save it, right? We couldn't find who it was that was advocating for it to be saved, right? That was...
Well, I think there were still advocates for saving it, but this condition is written in a way that it leaves it to the board to make a decision in its disposition agreement if it wishes to go forward preserving that building or not.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
Any questions?
Well, I'm just wondering what timeline we would need. I mean, all this has a lot of work to still do, but in terms of the Blue Heart Tavern, are we looking to come to some recommendation by a certain date? Is it January or something I've heard, read here? I don't know. So I would hope that the Selectmen would be able to make a decision sooner than that because this, the memorandum of understanding allows the developer to prepare an application to go to the planning board. And the hope is that they'll be able to go to the planning board for a hearing in December. So I would hope that before they're actually ready for a hearing, there is some consensus among this board as to whether or not that building should be preserved in place for town use, preserved in place for commercial use by the developer, or not preserved at all, or relocated to another place. So I think there's a discussion to be had, and I'm hoping that we may be able to have that at a Selectmen meeting in October or November. It would be very helpful to understand what opportunities it presents, but what the associated costs are with those opportunities, and what the trade-offs are for the package in total. So we have requested information of that nature from the developer, and we expect to receive that next month.
We've also requested information from Historical Society as to why, why did they would like to preserve that?
Society or commission? Actually, I...
I meant commission.
I think we're looking for information from anyone who believes that that building should be preserved in place. That would be historical commission members, Historical Society or residents that aren't affiliated with either, but have a strong feeling about that building, as well as information from people who believe the opposite, that the building is not worthy of preservation. Very good.
Any questions for the public? Hearing none. Okay. Do we have a motion?
And I guess the other thing I want to note is, it says that this MOU, if executed, terminates December 31st, 2018. What's the thought process on that?
Just so it's not open-ended forever. I mean, we'd originally, when it was originally drafted, it would terminate, would have terminated after Springtown Meeting. But there was, you know, some concern, what if we don't get done by Springtown Meeting? This would at least allow it to extend through next fall's town meeting, if there is one.
I'll just add one thing. We talked about having a negotiation team to work with the developer. It'd be the three of us as staff and the representative on the Islington Task Force is Michael, so he'd be the Selectman that would sit in. We would continually update the Board of Selectmen after every meeting that we've had with the developers, so you know, you're totally apprised as to what direction we're going. Those negotiations are going, and would seek your input prior to each session.
And you want to do that?
Sure. Okay. My only reservation, and you can appease me of it, it's a negotiating team. So we don't have individual agendas and individuals at the end saying, I would have done X, and the town staff doing Y.
No, that's what the team is.
So it's a team. So my expectation is that the team will make a final recommendation to the whole board.
That's correct.
Everybody's aligned?
Then I will move that we approve the MOU as presented to us this evening. And I guess the motion would include the document, and that we appoint Michael Walsh to represent the Board of Selectmen on the negotiating team to come up with a disposition agreement with Petruzziello as the party, the party?
Yeah, I just, but I just think we should lay out who's on the team. So it's you?
Appoint Michael Walsh.
It's there. It's Mike Gillette, Nora, Dan Bailey.
Nora Lockne and Special Town Council, Dan Bailey.
Okay. You seconded it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay. Thank you. Thank you both. Ms. Duken, will you join us? We're gonna have a financial update from PM Duken, our finance director.
Please. You going live for that one?
As the board knows, we like to do just a quick little update once a month at some of your meetings before we get into the heavy budget period. So we were in, did it earlier meeting, and went through our year-end close. And tonight, we just have a couple of next pieces, just quickly on the CAFRA, which we've done, the free cash certification. I just want to clarify two kind of accounting, housekeeping items that we're gonna have for the fall town meeting, and then just show you where we stand, our current status against our financial policies, and then what are our next steps going forward. So the CAFRA we went through, talking about that this is the 20th year, and that puts us in a very small group of communities in the state. We just had a fun little slide on some of the pictures over the years. And it's fun to look back, and then again, as I said, it really shows the continuity and the commitment from the town to the financial disclosure and kind of the professional handling of the financial policies. Because that's a long time, 20 years that we've been at this, and different people may have come and gone, but the Selectmen have really set the tone to say that this is how the town will handle the finances. But it is kind of fun to look back at some of these. So the free cash, we had certified sometime about a week and a half ago after our year-end close. We had a very smooth year-end close, and I want to thank the staff, in particular Maria Larry, for all of her work on that and getting the free cash certified. So our free cash certified as of June 30th was 5.9 million. Of that, there's one piece that relates to one of these accounting, housekeeping articles that we'll have at town meeting that I mentioned. About 576,000 of that's related to a school account that we just need to kind of re-vote in a different format than what we currently have. The Department of Revenue had us close out that account as part of the free cash certification. So within that 5.9 million is about 500,000 of funds that is kind of separate. So the net amount, 5.3 million, is just exactly where we were last year. So that's a really nice, good number for us because of good budgets in FY '17. We've been disciplined in using our free cash. So the chart at the bottom shows you for the last several years, our certified free cash amount in blue, and then what we've used or voted from that in green, what have we used at town meeting. So you can see on the leftmost columns on that chart, in 2009, 2010, we were using every penny of free cash. We needed to do that to get through town meeting. And then, as we've become a little bit more disciplined and had a little bit better budgets over the last several years, we're not utilizing the full amount. Our financial policies say that we should have about 2.9 million unused in free cash. So we should see that delta between the blue and the green. But because we've been a little bit better with that, we start with a little bit higher balance, and that's why we're able to maintain strong balances. So this puts us right where we were last year, which will let us, as we go forward in the budget process, utilize some funds.
Just for the public's purpose, can you talk about what certified means?
Sure, sorry. So as part of every municipality in the state's year-end process, we have to submit all of our documentation to the Department of Revenue, all of our revenue and expenditure balance sheets, receivables, liabilities, lots of information like that. And they go through all of that. And when they certify free cash, it's almost like a town's retained earnings. So we budget to have revenue and expenses budget match exactly. That's not always the case. There are some expenses we don't use, and those funds remain. We have some revenue that comes in higher than budget. And we went through some of the detail with that at your last meeting. The revenue has been strong with the motor vehicle excise. Some of the budgets that get unused are in our fixed cost, where we have to budget with some flexibility in those accounts. So when they certify a balance, it means this is the retained earnings, almost, you know, what's left over at the end of one budget year, that once certified, you can now use at future town meetings. It takes town meeting votes you use the money. And 5.9 million sounds very high. It's, you know, less than 2% of our budget. So we're not talking quite a large amount. We are very disciplined in what we use this money for. Each year, we use about 1.7 million for capital, so for our base school and municipal capital articles. We use $100,000 to transfer to our stabilization account to keep us on track with that. We've used the last two years and would plan going forward to use 500,000 of this to reduce the tax rate, to give some relief to our tax bill. And then we always use some additional amounts for other capital or other one-time needs. So some years at town meeting, we're using free cash to close out our snow and ice account. The last two years, we've been able to do some excellent additional capital projects. This most recent town meeting, we were able to do, the schools had some IT infrastructure work because of all the Chromebook use. We were able to handle that. The, this chart shows, we should have about 2.9 unallocated purely by our financial policies. That would be the red line. So we don't quite meet that each year, but the additional amounts that we use have been for one-time needs, extra capital, snow and ice, any other kind of miscellaneous article that might come up at town meeting that requires funding. So we're not applying it to our operating budget, even though we're not leaving the full amount by our policies. It's okay because we're kind of doing it for one-time items. Just one more quick look at free cash. This is a slide we have kind of in some of our budget documents that shows how we use free cash every year for history. I know it's really detailed. I just want to look at that bottom line with the arrow on the left, the unallocated amount. Again, that should be about 2.9 million. We're not quite meeting that. But again, the last couple of years, those additional amounts we've been using have been for extra capital projects. So the town has said, while we have, while we're having a good, healthy free cash balance, a lot of it coming from good motor vehicle excise revenue, we're gonna apply that back to capital and try to be as aggressive as we can on making some additional capital investments in the town and school needs. Next, just to mention those two kind of housekeeping articles that we'll have for the fall town meeting. And really, both of these articles are just replicating what we already have had in place with some items, but we're trying to restructure the accounts for better compliance with updated Department of Revenue requirements. The Department of Revenue and the state sponsored a municipal modernization act that passed in 2016, and there were a lot of like cleanup things in there. So they have really kind of asked communities for, say, accounts we might have on the books. If you're not really in compliance with their better tools, they would like you to kind of vote those new tools and set your funds up that way. So we have two of them that would be addressing at this fall town meeting. One is to ask the town to establish a school special education reserve account by accepting a certain Chapter 40, Section 13E. This was a new tool in that municipal modernization act. And it's to help communities handle unanticipated fluctuations in special education costs, which we often see in the budget. The school budget might have a spike one year and then heads down the next year with some costs. And this is what is, to help us get through that. This first has to be voted by the school committee, which they'll be doing at an upcoming meeting, and then accepted by town meeting. That lets us set up the account. Once that account is set up, that money I mentioned earlier, we had some funds on hand that really did this purpose. The school gets some Medicaid reimbursement amounts, and they use them for special ed costs. So that piece that's in the free cash is what we'll be voting to fill this account at the fall town meeting. So the vote will say from free cash, but it will be from this account that we've had for several years, many years. And this is similar to many communities. It's not just Westwood. Now that we have that account, if town meeting passes that in the fall, to utilize those accounts during the year would require a majority vote by the school committee and the Board of Selectmen. We would not have to go back to town meeting. So again, this Fed Reserve account is a new tool that the Department of Revenue has set up and has asked us to do in place of how we reserved the Medicaid funds previously.
Is it mandated that it's a joint approval?
Yes. The specific language of that special education reserve account mandates that.
And have you previewed this with the school committee yet? Are you going to them soon?
Yes, we have, we have previewed it with the superintendent and the business manager for the schools and the school committee chair. And so they've gone through it and understood what we're doing here. And then I've not been directly to the school committee, but...
Because, yeah, I just think procedurally, they seem to need to have things presented at two meetings before they can approve it at the second meeting. So I just, I don't know what frequency they're on for meetings, but given town meeting is November 13th, if they're still on a once-a-month schedule, we've got to, I don't know if they can do it. I don't know.
No, I think the twice issue is a policy change. This is accepting of a statutory language. One vote will be fine.
Yeah, I will check in, though, but they, they...
That may be the case. That's great, but, you know.
We provided them with the language on what the school committee needs to vote, just to have the vote go to town meeting. But again, I think they were pretty clear on that it was a kind of a restructuring of something that was our... of something that was already in place. And I will just mention that once the funds are in place, and it says it requires a school committee and a Board of Selectmen vote to use the money, we anticipate that being kind of once a year, that, okay, we're looking at the budget, and, you know, it's $100,000 kind of unanticipated or extra for that year, that we would come in with a one-time vote, not every bill that's subsequently paid from that.
Does it require a joint meeting, or can they, they can vote it?
Just each vote it. But again, a new tool that many towns and schools are starting to adopt.
So Pam, when I jump down to the meals tax, it says approve revenue to go directly to this account. Are you referring back to the special ed account?
No, no. So these would be two, sorry, no, these are two separate...
What is that account going to be?
The meals. So in 2014 Fall Town Meeting, our town did adopt the local option meals tax. And at the same time, the town meeting said we would like this to go into a separate account as the money comes in and not be utilized without a subsequent vote of town meeting. And that's what we have been doing to date for these two and a half plus years now. It's another one where Department of Revenue was saying, really would rather see you have that set up in this other account, a special purpose account, like we have that capital stabilization fund. So they've asked that we have the town meeting adopt this Chapter 40, Section 5B. Again, it's coming from their policy with the municipal modernization act that they want to see towns kind of streamline a bit, have a little bit more consistency, because now they've come out with some standardized tools. So this really is doing nothing differently than what we've been doing to date or what the town meeting's original intent was. But at this town meeting in the fall, we would vote to set up that account, vote to say that all future meals tax money goes into that account, requires a future town meeting vote to use the money, and we will appropriate the funds we currently have now into that account.
And we want to get the award next year, too.
But we still haven't designated what that account will be used for. So at what point are we going to do that?
So that's something we'll probably start talking about in this year's budget process.
I mean, I just, I'm harkening back to last year's town meeting, and there was, there was a question around slush funds, because we had money going into accounts, but we didn't have them, we weren't saying what they were for. So I'm just feeling like we should be prepared.
Yeah. And I would say for a November town meeting, it's not really where we'd be utilizing that money anyway. So this really, and, you know, it really, I'll present it as much as I can during the hearing process, it's just an accounting cleanup that the Department of Revenue has asked us to do. But we would look to utilize those funds or talk about those funds as part of your budget process for the May town meeting.
And that's been a regular discussion item in long-range planning. And I, just to reiterate, what we've talked about in the past is considering some of the funds potentially going to the Aid to the Elderly account, to the extent we now supplement private funded donations to that account, and we now have the ability to do that. So this was earmarked as a point for consideration where some funds might be able to come from. Certainly a small portion, we have more than...
Yes. And the Aid to the Elderly Committee has been working on, you know, what would be an appropriate amount to ask the town. Perhaps it's a match of what we receive in private donations. We're trying to still maintain those private donations. An example is what you see with that Not Your Average Joe's fundraiser. We also have tried to heighten our reach out to make sure we have anyone who's eligible for that or would like to be a recipient. And we would have more information on that in kind of the late October, early November timeframe, not in time for Fall Town Meeting to kind of ask. But the intent would be that we would kind of know and would be coming to the Selectmen during the budget process to, at the May town meeting.
Yeah, it's as much you as us, but I just feel like there's some policy questions lingering. And they've been lingering, so we should just kind of start making those decisions. If we're going to fund Aid to the Elderly, let's get that on the docket. If we're going to use a capitalization fund, let's, you know, let's stop making the decisions.
Yes.
And is it going to be a separate account for meals and a separate account for hotel, or?
We can have one account for both of those. And I do just have to check with DOR, can we have one article to do the three things we need done? I'd like to just do that, or do we have to have separate?
Well, you wouldn't want to have one approved and the others not. It really is a complete picture.
Right, so we have to have a vote to set up the account, a vote to say that that revenue coming in goes into there.
And then allocate the current revenue.
Again, we would never want to go to a place where we have two accounts. It's going to be hotels and meals is more.
That will all be one. And I think we can do it all in one article. And I think, you know, town council could help us look at the language and make sure that it ties everything into one article. And the same for the special ed reserve account.
Well, and the state's expecting that as part of the municipal modernization act, that any existing funds would move into it as well.
Absolutely.
That's, it's a requirement of sorts, right? If we don't do it, what's, there's a consequence, isn't there? We didn't move in this direction?
A general fund.
Well, it would...
We wouldn't be able to keep it as its own account.
It would, it would close out to free cash, like happened with the, kind of this, and that goes against kind of the intent of our town meeting vote, so we don't want that to happen. I do just have to say that there may be one or two more of these at the May town meeting. One item, and we'll talk to Mike and the IT board, the same thing. This is just the state kind of catching up on things that have been out there. They packaged the municipal modernization act. There might be a similar type requirement of how we structure our cable access money. Every town kind of has that money, and people have it set up in certain ways. The state has now come out with some standard methodology to handle that money and saying, we'd like to see you adopt either this kind of fund or this fund, your choice, your town meeting vote, but you need to kind of move towards that. So that would be one, and then maybe one or two other smaller ones. So we want to present them to the town as really more accounting cleanup, not the new. We're adopting the meals tax that's been done. We're not changing the intent of that original town meeting vote. Okay. And this document here, I know is small and busy, I'm just going to point out one thing. We always, each year, we have a standard list of financial policies, and we always do this status report, where any financial policy that has a dollar amount or a target, we look at and say, where do we stand against that policy? This first sheet I'm showing you is a look back to one of the first years that we did this status, 2006. Yes, you can breathe, it's easier. If you look on the right-hand column...
I didn't see the data first.
The status, the status is all red Xs and one check. I just wanted to point out, and almost in, you know, tying it into that CAFRA, we've been working at some of this for quite a while. But in the early, this was probably the second or third year that we had done the policies back in 2006. We set up our policies, but we were really not in compliance. And we've had a very steady commitment to addressing some of those in the years forward. So the next two sheets show you as of today, where do we stand against our financial policies. So lots of green checks, really only two areas that we're technically not in compliance with. One is that I mentioned that free cash leaving about 2.9 million unallocated. We've not quite met that, but again, we've been using the additional free cash for capital and one-time needs. And then the other one, towards the bottom, the second from the bottom, is how much are we spending every year on capital, our base capital as a percent of our budget? Right now, we spend about 1.7 million in those base school and municipal capital articles. Our policies say that should be about 2.3 million, so about 500,000 short. But we continue to address that and try to tighten that gap each year in the budget process.
But we've increased by almost a million dollars per year since 2006.
It's really incredible to look back at those earlier ones and just see where we were, and just see, I'm sure if I can go back, what we had in the, what we had in the stabilization, what we had in different accounts compared to what we have now. And all of that, you know, is what helps with the AAA rating. And really, it can't stress enough that it's been a very kind of methodical, slow and steady building. And what that has done is let us kind of address some of these needs and build structure into our budget without hurting our other areas of the budget, our school and municipal operating budget. Just finally, you know, what's next? So we went through the year-end close with the Selectmen. Now we've done the free cash certification, and that's a, you know, good number for us to have as we move forward in the budget process. We have some reporting requirements we'll continue with in October with Department of Revenue and Department of Education. Our audit is ongoing. Our auditors were on site last week. And again, this week, and then they'll be meeting with the Audit Committee. For our current year FY '18 issues, we'll be starting to get our property values certified within the next month, and also our new growth certification. So those are important numbers we need to see. What was our actual new tax growth in FY '18? What's our values, commercial and residential? And then we start to bring that into the Selectmen to have you look at setting the tax rate and that shift between commercial and residential. And then we just continue with FY '19, kind of prepping for the budget. Our capital budget requests have been submitted, and we're compiling those. We've been meeting with our financial groups, budget steering, long-range planning. We have our debt schedules, the policy status, our five-year forecast, and we start now to review those with all of the parties, as really that sets the basis for what the Selectmen will start to do with the upcoming budget cycle. And that's it. So we'll be back in kind of another month, and really, at that point, we'll have those certified values, start talking about the FY '18 tax rate and that commercial residential split. That's really kind of the next big piece that we would need the board to address.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
You're going to come back in a few minutes, it looks like.
Want to do that now?
Yeah, can we just do that with you now?
The Capitol?
On the Capitol? So it looks as though you need the 167,775,000 released.
167,000, that's a million.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That would be quite a number, huh?
Do you want me to go through the issue, the fire vehicle, two fire vehicles, IT, I and user technology, library patron, staff and user technology, and police vehicles?
Yes.
Anything, Mike, that we need to know or? I think this is all planned for. You just need us to vote to release the money?
You vote to release it. And, you know, most of the capital was released in the first quarter, but that's really because a lot of work, particularly for the schools, is done over the summer months.
Oh, I got it, okay.
A lot of the ordering for some of the larger town vehicles is done, you know, early in the year because they take time to come in. So this is really just a small allocation and release.
I move we approve the release of second-quarter capital, totally $167,775 to the respective departments.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
Nora, are you going to talk about the Obed Baker House?
I have a revised draft of the RFP.
From what you sent?
From what I sent, yes.
Oh, okay. Throw this out.
So just some very minor changes to it, but one change, the most significant change is the opening date of the RFP.
So when is it going to be?
November 6th. That is the soonest that we could open the RFPs. Now, that is after the FinCom hearing. It's before town meeting, but only one week before. So while I'd still recommend going ahead with the advertising the RFP and doing that opening, I really think it's just too tight a timeframe to bring that forward for the Fall Town Meeting.
And we're going to be embarking on the regular town meeting come January.
Very soon after that.
We need that information and, yeah.
That's right. So I think we'll still have a great process. We'll have plenty of time then to review the proposals when they come in and have a full-baked presentation, long before we need to for the spring town meeting.
Nora, is this the second time we've put this out?
This is the third time.
This is the third time?
Third time, yes.
Third time's the term.
We did it in 2014, again in 2015, and this is 2017.
Yeah, have we changed anything from the prior two times?
Yes, so the most significant change in this application is the, the amount that we're requesting. The minimum bid is a purchase at a minimum of $150,000 or a lease at a minimum of $3,000 a month for 60 months. Now, I know when we last spoke about this, the board would much prefer a purchase to a lease. So the last go-around, it was $100,000 purchase or $1,000 a month for, I'm sorry, $1,500 a month for a lease. We've doubled that to 3,000. The reason for increasing the amount from 100,000 to 150 was partially due to the increase in the assessment over the last two years and partially due to the fact that we believe the building does have more value to the people who are interested in it today. That's the minimum bid price. We expect it to be a competitive bid, and we expect that the bids that come in could be substantially higher than that. But we also recognize that the amount of money that would need to be put into that building to make it a usable structure for any commercial use is significant.
I have a request.
Yes.
For consideration, that we not require that the Beehive Oven be preserved and maintained, but that we would look favorably on a proposal that preserves the Beehive Oven preservation and maintenance.
I'll make that.
I'd rather loosen that so we don't...
So you still the option to make that a requirement, but it's not?
Yeah, so...
More favorable on a proposal?
Well, by saying we prefer, it doesn't obligate us, does it?
We can say that a proposal will be deemed highly advantageous.
If it does.
If it has that.
Whatever the way is, it just would, because if we don't get one that preserves it the way it's written now, we're without a proposal to consider.
That's true. And we'd be going out for a fourth.
We would be going right back out again. I mean, obviously, we have a building, an old building, that has this feature within it, but it also takes up a lot of space within it. And we don't know what the proposals are going to be, so it may be a burden to some proposals to have it. I just don't know. Okay, that would be nice.
Is there anybody from the public interested in this? No, okay. Do we have a motion?
What are we moving here?
Moving to authorize us to proceed with the issuance of the RFP.
As amended.
As amended.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose none.
Okay.
Thanks, Nora.
Let's move on to old business, appointments, open space and recreation plan committee. So Christina, are you looking for, do we still look for people, or do we have people?
Well, so we, Nora gave me an updated list today. We have two added members, Pam Kane as an unaffiliated resident, as well as Kristin Stayer, Stayer, for the Westwood Land Trust. So we're still looking for Council on Aging and School Committee. I think Karen and Nora have really been working hard to try to get that list. So here's, here's the updated list of people, and we just need a, one of the Board of Selectmen members to serve up.
I mean, I'll take it if no one else has a strong feeling.
Sounds good.
Hold. Got it.
Okay, so...
Just deal I've been a while. Do you want to make a motion?
Are you ready?
Got it.
Okay, so I'm actually going to name who's on here, if you don't think it's good to have people know. So I move we make the following appointments to the Open Space and Recreational Plan Committee: John Hickey, Board of Selectmen; Steve Alunoff, Brian Gorman from the Planning Board; Todd Sullivan and RJ Shear from Conservation Commission; Ann Delaney from Recreation Commission; Roger Christian from the Board of Health; Marion Cardy from the Commission on Disability; Chuck Sheehan and Michael Gay from Youth Sports Organization; Joe Prebatera and Pam Kane as unaffiliated residents, that's unaffiliated to committees; Kristin Stayer from the Westwood Land Trust. And that we also have as ex officio members, am I correct on that, Mike?
Yep.
Staff which include our Conservation Agent, Recreation Director, Director of Public Works, Town Planner, and Director of Community and Economic Development, and our Town Administrator?
Yes.
I thought I saw you on one.
I am, ma'am.
Okay, I move those appointments.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. So we're going to tonight, are we closing on warrants?
You are.
Okay. So tomorrow night, I will be attending the FinCom meeting and reviewing what has been received to date. Not feeling the felt need to have to walk through them tonight, Mike, is that okay?
It's okay.
I'd rather we do it tomorrow night officially.
Except for, did you want, you asked for Dottie to come to talk about her...
Oh, okay, Dottie didn't really should be here. Do you want to talk about the waiving of the license fees?
Yes, please. Selectmen Walsh and Hyde. So what I have, what I'm proposing for two warrant articles, and one is for a revision to our animal bylaws. So what happened was in 2012, there was a revamp of the animal control laws. And one of the clauses in there was for towns to really think seriously about waiving the fee for anybody seventy or older. And we didn't do it right away, but in talking to other towns, they have done it. There's thirty-seven communities, I did a survey, that all do this for their elderly residents. And it's not really so much the money. It's, I think, a lot of them, it's really hard for them to get in here. They don't use computers. It's, it's very inaccessible once they get here to get up to the town clerk's office. And, you know, I think that's, I think that's what we should do. I mean, our elderly residents, you know, have done a lot for this town, and it's ten dollars. And it's not going to change how we license dogs. We license about fifteen hundred dogs a year. We're very diligent. We, we probably have one of the highest rates of all the communities around. You know, we, we send out notices. We have the animal, animal control officer help us if need be. So I think it's going to be better because automatically we have a list. We have about a hundred and forty-three that this would affect. And provided that we have the rabies vaccination and it's up to date, they would get a tag sent automatically. This would not deter anybody from registering because you still have to license the dog. It's a state law. And it's for protection of, of our community. We want to make sure that the dogs that we license are all vaccinated. So I, I think it's, you know, this is something, it's in the town clerk's office. It's a responsibility of the town clerk. I just feel like it's...
My fear is though, I mean, it's critical that people register these dogs.
So...
And I just, my fear is that by just removing these processes...
However, Chairman Hickey, I, that is the responsibility of the town clerk. It's one of the, it's in the law that the town clerk licenses dogs. And it's something that I take very seriously, any responsibilities that come under me. And that's one thing.
Well, we all take things seriously.
We do, but that's one thing, you know, we have, the office that I'm in is dictated by a lot of state and federal laws, and that is one of them. And I just feel like there's no way that it's, it's going to deter any registrations. I mean, it's, it's going to be more work for us because we're going to be sending these out to people. And...
But let me just say, Dottie, I mean, this law is five years old. Only ten percent of the municipalities have adopted it. So it shows that my reservations are not crazy to me, right? I mean, you know, so ninety percent of the municipalities of Massachusetts have not adopted this.
It's a matter of, to be honest with you, it's a matter of, of the clerks and some of the towns because we, we do all the licensing to bring that to town meeting. So I don't think it's, I don't think because there's only, and I, in the study that I did, the survey, not all towns respond to surveys. Thirty-seven did, and all thirty-seven of them do, they do waive their fee. So I, you know, I can, I can assure you and the community that it's not going to deter any registration. Dogs will still be licensed, and the only thing that we're doing is really waiving this fee for them. We're sending them the tag automatically, and it's not, it's not that we're going to, you know, advertise that you don't have to pay a fee. It's still automatically get the tag.
But how do you deal with new, so if I'm seventy-one years old and I go get a puppy tomorrow, how do you know I've done that?
Well, because we get, it's, it's a state law. We get all the rabies vaccinations.
From the owner?
No, from the vets, the local vets.
Okay.
And so what we do when we get those is we send them a letter saying that you have a new puppy and you need to register your dog. So, I mean, they can still come in and do it. It's just that we would waive the fee.
So we waive the fee. Are we waiving fines?
Well, if we were waiving the fee because we're, they're going to be on time, we're, they, they wouldn't have a fine because those people that are that age, they're going to be automatically sent a tag in January.
So there's no scenario where someone in town over the age of seventy has an unlicensed dog?
There won't be unless they have a dog and we don't know about it.
Would you waive the fine?
Well, you don't have to license your dog until they're six months or older.
Okay, so if I'm seventy-one years old and I have a dog who's eight months old and I never reported him and I saw a vet in New Hampshire and he's roaming the street and bites a kid, are you going to fine that person?
I, I would actually, the animal control officer would fine them.
Okay, and you wouldn't waive that?
Dog at large. We, we'd have to look at the circumstance, to be honest with you. We probably would find them because they should have been. Everybody, everybody knows about licensing too because it's on the annual census. It's sent out.
Yeah, I don't know, just to comment, I don't know that it matters whether or not they're paying a license fee if somebody's going to try to...
Well, I disagree. I think it shows the seriousness of the act. And I think when you waive that, you've made it purely ministerial, and I don't think people will take it as serious. And I think, I think, you know, we'll have to disagree.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I disagree. You know, I...
You disagree?
I've been doing this for ten years and, you know, we, like I said, our, our dogs are all licensed. We, you know, at one point in time, you know, we used to send out lawyer's letters with Tom, but we don't have to do that because we have a, we have a diligent animal control officer.
But I want to keep that record going, and I'm afraid you're messing with success.
I, like I said, I, I'm actually really insulted because that's what I take pride in. That's my job.
Well, there's no, I'm not insulting, I'm just questioning.
No, I, I just, you know, and, and I mean, I think at the end of the day, I'm not doing this, you know, for myself. This is to, this is to help make it easy for, for our elderly residents that can't get in this, this building. Try it, you know, and they don't have a computer. We, we have so many options.
But how does the waiving of the ten dollars help them? They're still going to have to license the dog.
But we're going to send it out automatically. So what we're going to do is we're going to make sure the rabies are up to date. If they're not, then they're going to get a call or a letter saying we need to have an updated rabies before you can get your dog licensed. And then if that doesn't work out, we have the animal control officer that, that does it as well.
Well, I'm surprised you're offended. It's my job to ask questions.
No, I know, but it's...
And the licensing of dogs is a matter of public health.
It is, absolutely.
And as the father of three young children, I'm critically concerned about public health.
Absolutely.
So I don't think you should be offended. And, you know, I, I don't, I don't support this, but it'll go to town meeting and you can do your advocacy there.
The fine, the fine in the instance of the biting is unrelated to the licensing. It's actually a fine for the, for the offense of biting.
It is.
Thank you, Dottie.
Okay.
Okay, so we have, we have six articles from the wards or town clerk, and we have four petition articles and three miscellaneous articles to be held. So I move that we post a town warrant with these articles as provided to us tonight.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have Coburn School Display Agreement.
So I just had a question back, because I didn't realize it was on the back. So is fourteen, Mike, and eighteen basically the same?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
No, it's fourteen and...
Fourteen and eighteen, they're not the same. They apply, they're related, they're related to electronic voting, but they're, they...
The content of what...
The content of the articles will be different, yeah.
It's really for the same thing, right?
Yeah, it is. It's, the one is seeking an appropriation, the other one is seeking simply to amend the language of the bylaw.
So I, I went back, and I'm sorry to go back, because your lady sit there for a second. Dottie had talked to, or at least on the notes, said about sharing with other towns as a possibility because not everybody has their same town meeting on the same night.
Right.
And so I'm just wondering if, if Ellen and Dottie should talk and maybe...
They have talked, and then they were about the possibility of, of coordinating, but it was decided to keep them separate.
Okay, I'm just, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Hello, ladies.
Coburn School Display Agreement. Tell me what it is.
You want me to do it? Okay, sure. So...
Is that your pursuit?
Yeah, back, back when we were pushing forward with the library, the Historical Commission at the state level expressed some concern with the fact that we were going to be moving what was then a historical structure, which was a Coburn School to make place for the new library. And they raised that concern with the town, and we came in, we came to an agreement that in order to be able to move the, move and hopefully preserve the building, which we have since done, especially the exterior, they also wanted an exhibit to be placed in the new library that acknowledged the, the history of the Coburn School. And so the Historical Commission has been working for a couple of years now on coming up with a concept, which I think is a two-pot concept. One is exterior, one is interior. Exhibits for, for the Coburn School, which will offer displays. And the library was concerned. The library was concerned that they didn't want to be taking responsibility for something that was being installed in the library by the Historical Commission. And so they entered into an agreement as to how this would work. And basically, in a nutshell...
Town is responsible.
The town is going to be responsible, which we are. I mean, we're responsible for the building. So we're not really accepting any responsibility that we wouldn't otherwise have. We're basically saying, yeah, we'll take, we'll take, and it won't have to deplete their, their budget if something should break or need to be repaired. We will, we will find the funds to do that separately. The Permanent Building Committee has taken responsibility. Those, you will recall that this was an important element in acquiring a four-million-dollar, roughly, appropriation from the state, a matching reimbursement fund. And so the, that was, that went into the library construction project, which reduced the cost for us. And so the PBC has still some funds remaining in its account, and it's going to fund or voted to fund the installation of these exhibits in, in the library from that fund.
So I guess, you mind?
No, go ahead, yeah.
So I guess my only question, what happens if it gets, especially the external one, gets destroyed in, say, an act of mother nature? Do we have to replace it? Would we be able to replace it? I mean, if you're taking some of the antique things that were in the Coburn School and put them outside, wouldn't they just be...
Well, the, the outside would not be, there wouldn't be any antiques outside.
Okay.
Feel free to jump in, Tricia. And, yeah, just to elaborate a little bit on, on what Mike said. He mentioned that, that the commission has been working on this for a couple of years, and the trustees have been talking with the commission in good faith, really, for that whole time. Because not only did we want to make sure that we fulfilled the memorandum, but we really wanted to make sure that, that what resulted would make people happy and, and really proud of the, of the school and, and its history. So what was initially, what was eventually proposed was certainly of a greater scope and a more significant installation. Initially, it was contemplated to be pictures. But now there's a display case inside, which will be inside the community room, which has, where's, which is where the artifacts would be. So they'll all be protected in plexiglass. But if there's a storm or if there's some, you know, if there's a leak, I, I'm not saying that there would be, but if there were and something got damaged, we just, we really wanted to make sure that, 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 that kind of eventuality was, was thought about ahead of time, you know, to your point. But what would be outside would be manufactured specifically to be outside.
Very much like you see at the historical sites. So it's a plaque that indicates what the school was and when it was constructed. More, more of a passive display.
More of a concrete display?
Well, steel, maybe.
Yeah.
Harder.
And the objects in the plexiglass cases are not deemed so precious that they couldn't possibly be sourced somewhere else.
Okay, all right.
And this is undergone review by town council?
Town council. Have reviewed it? Yep.
And you're fine with it?
I love it.
Good sir.
It was drafted by, by...
Office of General, he was unable to be here tonight.
Nice to have legal counsel as a library trustee. Okay, I move that we approve and authorize Chairman Hickey to sign the memorandum of agreement among the library trustees, Historical Commission, and Board of Selectmen.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So the next, Mike, is, looks kind of technical. A regulatory agreement for two affordable units at 321 Washington Street. So this, what we're talking about is the new building diagonally across from the fire, the fire station in Arlington. Okay.
And there's an obligation that they have, what, ten percent, right, Nora?
I'm sorry, so have you?
The, the new, the 321 Washington Street, two units is ten percent of the...
Twelve units. You have to round up, so it's two new or...
Okay. Any questions?
This is standard.
This is standard. We made some modifications. One of the things that we ran into this year with regard to University Avenue is every year we're supposed to certify back that, that the units that are affordable are being appropriately rented and leased to people that qualify as affordable households. And this year, they sent me the paperwork, had a lot of blanks on it, and, and I was supposed to attest it and send it in. There was a process that was there. I questioned it. I felt the blanks were way too, too many. So I sent it back and said, you know, you got to fill this in. And then when I got it back and it was pretty much filled in, what I then started to question was, well, how can I certify this? Because I'm, I'm not doing any checking.
Right.
I'm just accepting somebody's information. And the acceptance of the information is the people that are, that are responsible for the units. And so I felt uncomfortable about that. And so we started talking about we need a third party, an objective third party that's going to run some sort of audit process on, you know, the, the validity of, of what is being submitted. And in do, in making the modifications to that regulatory agreement, we had this one in front of us for Petruzzello's property. And we asked DHCD to incorporate this into, into this development agreement, which they did. This isn't the first time that we've been a leader with DHCD on making some modifications. We'll run into issues, I can tell you several.
But didn't we already do this?
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't do it for, I think we, no, what we did was we talked, we talked about a grant, an application to DHCD, which said that we would, we, and at that point, we gave you a draft of the regulatory agreement that we would be sending with the application. And now we're back saying, okay, the regulatory agreement is now finished. We need you to sign it.
Yeah, but what we did was we, we supported the local initiative program application that went in in July. So what does this mean in terms of timing, Nora? We do this, where are they, I saw a rental sign out on the front of the property?
The building is essentially complete. They expect them to receive their certificate of occupancy sometime this week or next. And they will be prepared to market the units. They have their marketing program in place. They're just waiting for an execute agreement. So if you sign that agreement tonight, we will give it to the developer. He will sign the agreement, and then it goes to DHCD to be signed. So we need three original signatures. Once that's done, then they can begin their marketing program.
And who from our staff is involved in determining eligibility of renters of the affordable units?
Sarah Bouchard is our housing agent. She will follow through the process. This will have a monitoring agent and a, it's not, I don't know if it's exactly a lottery, but it's a, it's a marketing program. Mentioned it, Ready Renter is the name of the program that goes through and collects the names of people who are eligible, does their financial review, and then puts them on a list as eligible to rent the apartment. So it's the Ready Renter program that they're using. Sarah will confirm that they've done the work in accordance with that program.
Is there anything the town does to inform the public that these are available?
So unlike Gable's at University Station, which was able to have a seventy percent local preference, a small development like this cannot have that, simply isn't permitted. So the, there's no preference for Westwood, Westwood residents, but we will do all we can to get the word out to Westwood residents. It will be putting the advertisement on our website. It will be advertised locally as well.
Good, I mean, that's, that makes sense. I'm not asking that we control if I, or have the local preference to override. I just, it would seem that, yeah.
People who are interested.
Hopefully, people are paying attention if they, for any of the units.
So there will be ten market rate units and these two affordable units.
And word is still that there's some pre-leasing activity?
They do have, they do have a number of those apartments pre-leased.
I think he has two leased, right? One was a Severian teacher.
I know, I know, two were, two have signed leases and others are in the process.
No, this runs in per, I'm sorry, this runs in perpetuity, right? So it can never...
It does. The two units have to remain as long as that building remains.
So even if a new owner, if he sells it, it still continues?
That's right. It runs with the rent. It's with the zoning approval. It's part of the permission to construct the building is the requirement to have these two units.
And do they certify, they certify them every year, right? Because I get calls from residents up at...
The resident, people that are leasing have to...
Every year.
Have to come in and give them their income justification that, that shows that they meet the requirement.
Because they may lose their eligibility along the way.
Get a raise and put you over the dollar mark.
Happens all the time. And that's the difference between the rental units and the purchases. The purchases have to qualify the day of purchase, but after that.
Right, right.
The rental units also have to have the rent and the utility amounts recertified on an annual basis to make sure it doesn't... on an annual basis to make sure it doesn't exceed the HUD guidelines.
I move we authorize Chairman Hickey to sign three originals of the regulatory agreement for the two affordable apartments at 321 Washington Street and to forward the same to Petruzzello Properties and the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for final execution.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose none. Okay. We have the minutes from June 19th.
I don't think they're long enough. I hope to do that we get an edited version that's longer.
See, this is what happens when we go, she can now go to the videotape.
That is part of the problem, yes. I move approval.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose none. Anything else? Press, public? Mr. McCusker?
I'm done.
No press tonight.
No. Well, you know, this municipal election's tomorrow. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
To our next meeting?
Our next meeting is October...
Second. Second.
Second, 2017. This will be the pre-meeting to FinCom, correct?
Yes.
So, our next meeting is Monday, October 2nd at 6:00 PM.
No. No.
No, 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 no. It's a regular meeting.
It's just a meeting.
You have it on here at 6:00 PM.
I have it on 6. You talked about starting later now.
The idea of...
I know. So, I just...
If it's later.
So, you want to start, you can do 6. Can you do 6?
But I can't do 6.
Can you do 6?
It's a one, it's a one, it's an initial meeting.
So, our next meeting will be on Monday, October 2nd at 6:00 PM here in the Selectmen's Meeting Room at Town Hall. Thank you.